Welcome to the regular, a regular meeting of the Revere School Committee. This evening it is November fifteenth, two thousand and sixteen. Please rise and salute the flag.
Pledge of allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call of the committee members.
Mr. Feranti.
Here.
Ms. Crabalisi.
Here.
Mr. McGuire.
Here.
Mrs. Rizzo.
Here.
Mr. Sinema.
Here.
Ms. Ty.
Here.
Mayor Rigo.
Here.
Approval of the minutes of the October eighteenth, two thousand and sixteen meeting. All in favor, all opposed? Next item on our agenda is the superintendent's report. Dr. Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have just a couple of items under the superintendent's report tonight and we're going to begin, we're actually going to reverse the order a little bit. We were going to do a presentation of awards, but some of our recipients are still out doing schoolwork at this hour. They should be back shortly and then we'll, we'll address the recipients of the Mass Association of School Superintendent's Awards. So, we're going to move to calendar item three B, which is the presentation by Garfield Middle School students on their cultural literacy work. And I have to tell you, I had the privilege of visiting the Garfield School last week and doing a site visit, seeing some, going into classrooms, talking to students, talking to staff, talking to administrators. It was an unbelievable visit, but the one thing that everybody kept talking about was Culture Night, Culture Night. Well, tomorrow we have Culture Night. We're working on our Culture Night presentations. And I, you know, I really couldn't wait to get there to the Culture Night and when I did, I was just awestruck by over five hundred families participating, there with their student, there with their children. The kids, you couldn't have seen a happier group of kids if you looked anywhere in the city. Everybody brought homemade prepared meals that represented foods from their culture. I spoke to one young man who had an overflowing plate. It reminded me of my brothers on Thanksgiving, but I said to him, you know, what are you, what are you eating there? What do you have? He said, oh, I have a gold miss. I'm going to try every kind of food that I've never had before and I'm not going to eat any of the foods that I've already had. And I said, well, that's a great goal. That's a good, that's a good night, reason to have a cultural night. So, I'll let the kids share their work with you. We're really proud to have from grade six, Gwyneth Key, from grade seven, Michael Marderoni, and from grade eight, Yasmin Mered. And with them tonight is also, of course, their principal, Dr. Meyer, and the two teachers who really took the lead in coordinating and organizing and pulling off this fantastic cultural night. And they are Doug Trudell and Nicola Sala. So, we're very thankful to them for all of their hard work, not only on Culture Night, but then being here again with us tonight. We really appreciate it. And we can begin? Do you want to say a few words, Samantha, first?
Sure. I think they were expecting me to, so I don't want to go in the slide. Hi. So, as Dr. Kelly just said, last week was our Culture Night. And again, this is an opportunity for us to not just showcase, but celebrate the diversity within our school community. And we have three students who are here to share their work with us. Again, Gwyneth Key is a sixth grader, Michael Marderoni is a seventh grader, and Yasmin Mered is an eighth grader. And I also have Ms. Nicola Sala, my literacy coach, Mr. Doug Trudell, one of my ELA teachers who are responsible for putting this together. And I'd like for them to say just a little bit about what Culture Night is, because it's not just about bringing food. It is about tying, although that was a huge part for me. It's tying it into the curriculum and students' learning and identities and I want, I want the big picture to, to come through.
Hi, I'm Doug Trudell. I'm a sixth grade teacher over at Garfield. And kind of to be where we are right now is frankly awesome. We never could have imagined, last year at a director's meeting, the sixth grade team was thinking of a way to get community involvement. And at the director's meeting, we kind of throwing around some ideas. The high school team had offered some ideas about how they had kind of their own Culture Night. We kind of, you know, spitballed, you know, circled the wagons. We got it rolling. With just sixth grade alone, we had two hundred people last year, which was way more than we were expecting. The lines were buzzing, the kids, all they could do was talk about their projects, their work displayed, and of course, the food. This year, we brought seventh and eighth grade onboard and it ended up being, again, over five hundred people. Again, way more than we ever expected. The enthusiasm was there, the pride was there. And, you know, I've never felt more, you know, proud to be, you know, a revered, you know, teacher. So, that was awesome.
I'm Nicola Sala. I'm the literacy coach. So, this year in our planning, we wanted to shift the timing of our Culture Night. Last year, we did it in June as sort of an end of the year celebration. And this year, we wanted it to be in November, right before parent conferences and a celebration of our end of the first term. So, when we came back to school in August and we started our unit planning and our PLG meetings, we made sure that Culture Night was sort of our, our end goal and we sort of backwards planned from there. So, teachers made sure to explore in all of their texts, questions of identity, questions of courage, questions of freedom, equity. And so, through exploring those, students were able to take a look into their own cultures, into cultures that interest them, and do multiple projects. They had choices, anything from research to sharing a narrative. A few students did photo journals from the seventh grade. All of them were connected to the writing standards, the speaking and listening standards. And students showed a lot of pride in their work for sure. I think when we talk about sort of this idea of project-based learning and really sharing what you're doing for the community and for a greater purpose, I think it really shows in the student work. And the pride that they showed in displaying that and sharing that with the community was wonderful to see, so.
My family's journey to America was like any other first generation of Cambodian Americans. They didn't just come here for economical reasons, they came here for survival. All were faced with the difficult question of risking your life to escape for survival or staying, risking losing your life to the Pol Pot regime. During the time they escaped Cambodia, it was when, they escaped Cambodia, it was when a communist leader, Pol Pot, was under rule. They arrived in America on September twenty-seventh, nineteen eighty-eight, but they officially left Cambodia in nineteen eighty. He ruled the country from nineteen seventy-five to nineteen seventy-nine. In the time, about one point five million people out of the entire population were killed. About twenty thousand people were known to survive his captivity. This period of time was also known as the Khmari Rouge genocide. Also, this was when all Cambodians were tasked to answer the question of either staying, risking your life to, to the Pol Pot regime, or risking your life to escape for survival. The Khmari Rouge was dangerous, so my grandfather decided to take his family and flee the country. They first went to a Thailand refugee camp. Wasn't an easy trip there either. They had to walk through a jungle full of landmines. One step could change everything. When they finally got to the refugee camp, my dad had told me it was more like a concentration camp. It was surrounded by barbed wire guarded with soldiers who shoot to kill. In the camp, it lacked any source of freedom. You would have been given rations of food that was barely enough, but enough to survive. To better survive, you would need to trade with the Thai, the Thai locals, but to do that, you would have to get past barbed wire and soldiers shoot to kill. It was there at the country's border that my grandparents' eldest son, my uncle, was shot and killed. He was only nineteen when he died, though. They stayed in Thailand for eight years. After heading to Thailand, they went to the Philippines. It was completely different than in Thailand. According to my dad, it was their first taste of freedom. There were no barbed wire, there were no soldier shoot to kill, and you were free to trade with the Thai, with the locals without threat of a soldier. They would actually treat you like a human and not a captive. They stayed in the Philippines for six months and after, it was off to America for them. When they, when landing in America, they first landed in San Francisco to connect their flight. Due to the fact that Cambodia was on the other side of the world, they had to connect their flight, which meant that they had to take more than one flight to reach Massachusetts. After reaching Massachusetts, they lived in East Boston for about a week with my other grandparents, for they got here before them. They spent that week looking for a permanent home for six people, which was hard because they didn't speak or understand the language. Later, they would have found an apartment on Thornton Street in Revere, Massachusetts. Their early life in America was not as easy as it is now. They had to deal with racism. It was then when a lot of first-generation Cambodian Americans came to Revere. It was also hard to excel when you didn't, when you don't know the language or culture. My grandparents had to work odd jobs and any jobs available, really. Though they found an apartment on Thornton Street, that was not their permanent home. They moved through the, throughout the city a lot. They lived on Sumner Street, Thornton Street, Dehan Street, Coolidge Street, then Cushman Terrace, their current and permanent homes in two thousand and one. My dad and his sisters all went to the Revere Public Schools. My dad and his youngest sister went to the old Garfield Middle School. My Aunt Alicia had gone to the Beachmont, for back then, it had grades up to eighth grade, and Cathedral High School in Boston. My Aunt, my Aunt Karuna went to the Revere High School. Also, my Aunt Alicia grew her college years, went to the University of Vermont, but had to come back to Massachusetts and finish her education at Boston College. My dad and his sister now all have well-paying jobs. After finishing college, my Aunt Alicia had started her own business in Lynn, Massachusetts. My Aunt Karuna as well owns the business, but in Revere instead of Lynn. My dad, his youngest sister, alongside her husband, work at my Aunt Alicia's store. The journey to America was brutal, but it was the right decision. Most of the people who decided to stay died due to hunger, disease, and murder by the Khmari Rouge. My dad and his family made the right choice.
Hello. My name is Michael Marderoni and what I did was a little, well, unique, I'd say. I did a recipe. And this isn't any recipe. It's a special recipe known to my family only. Well, my Colombian side. What's been happening is that my grandmother has this special recipe of beans and she passed that down to the three generations. Now, there was my mom, which you can see in that picture, and my sister, which is also in the picture. Accompanied by me is my big brother and my niece. She was very mad at me because I woke her up that day. But anyways, let's continue with the recipe. Why was it so important? Why? The ingredients that was added was from heart. For example, my grandma loved sweet onions. That's like one of her favorite things to add to every food that she eats, so that's why she added it. My mom really likes the taste of bacon, and so do I. And my sister really likes ketchup, which I found kind of weird, but it actually tastes very good. The way that it mixes with the bacon, like, the ketchup gives it this sweet, yet like tomato taste. And the bacon, well, it's bacon. And then, why do I love this recipe and where did I meet it? Well, it every, everything has its beginning. When I was younger, my grandma came to visit and I remember, at that time, I lived in Somerset and it was, it was a really calm place. But the second that I entered that kitchen, it's, the food just smelled absolutely wonderful. I started eating and eating and eating till I was practically done. And then, right at the end, my grandma gives me the beans. And I'm asking myself, why would I eat beans right after eating my whole meal? It's like, it's like eating salsa right after eating chips. But, everything changed when I got a spoonful of it and started, and started eating. It was delicious. I'm talking about, it wasn't too, it wasn't too like liquidy, but it wasn't too hard. It wasn't too like salt, but it wasn't too like sweet. It was just amazing. And the way that, this was like in a cold time, so the way that the heat evaporation would go in your, your face just made you feel like, ah. Now, why do, did I find out about bacon and ketchup? Well, that's when I found out that my mom knew how to make this recipe. And then, I found something weird. It tasted really good, but it had a new taste. What was it? I asked myself. Well, it was bacon. And bacon alone. Later, it'll only be accompanied by, in a short time, by my sisters, which had bacon and ketchup. Once again, that evened it out perfectly. Now, the recipe. What's so unique, but makes it taste so great? Well, first, you start off with the water. But the first time I cooked that, I ended up putting it inside a giant pot, just filled it with water and started cooking. But that's not what you're supposed to do. So, that's why my beans came out weird. Just, I'm going to end it at that. But, you add peppers, green peppers, my favorite, tomatoes, sweet onions, bacon. So much bacon. Now, if you were to continue with this, I also like putting a little bit of barbecue. Barbecue makes it wonderful. Just, I'm going to, I'm going to say that. After ten minutes of the bacon at heat nine, you'll be able to put it in and then wait two hours with those ingredients inside and voila! You have made my family beans. And thanks for watching.
Mrs. Rizzo?
While she's taking care of that, I, I just want to say, this cultural night couldn't have come at a better time. It was phenomenal. Anyone in the audience doing a "just because"? Because it was like one of my favorite, some of the students wrote "just because" and while she's looking for that, I'm going to read one of the ones. They were all fantastic. Every, I think I went around the room three times, but it, where it was such a perfect time and I want to read one. "Just because I am Hispanic doesn't mean," I'm reading the child's handwriting, so, "doesn't mean..." Okay, I thought I was going to do this good, but. "Doesn't mean I cross the bu, border. Doesn't mean I'm going to get deported. Doesn't mean I transport drugs to the USA. I am Hispanic and I am proud to be one. Just because I am happy a lot doesn't mean I live a perfect life. Doesn't mean I am ever sad. Doesn't mean I have never felt pain before. I am happy because life is too short to be sad." There were so many of these "just because" up there and you know what? As adults, sometimes we have to read where these children are coming from and we have a lot to learn by them. And I have to say, going to Culture Night, you taught me a lot for one night and I really appreciate it. So, hopefully, they're done.
Thank you, Mrs. Rizzo.
I apologize for the technical delay.
Okay. This, it wasn't really about a specific like culture or group of people. It's something I made upon my own. It is about, if you guys ever heard about it, ESP, people who use like telepathy and telekinesis. And I used that in a way, it wasn't discriminating against any race, but with ability. So, the summary of my story is about a girl who lives in a time where like black and white is just like a color that people go by as and like language is just communication. But ESP, it exists and it like segregates everybody. And it's like history replaying itself, like how the black and whites, they had been discriminated against, with like the blacks, they were, seemed to be different from the rest and everybody thought that was a bad thing. My story is about a girl named Phoebe Skillet. She's a teenage girl. She has the ability of ESP and she's also the daughter of a man who created a war between like hate and discrimination and like want to overrule people who didn't have the same ability of ESP. He thought that people with it were more powerful and they should have overruled those who didn't have it, as though they were weak. And with this position, she like had to see like whether she would take the side of her father and she would go, go along with what he says and do all these things, or maybe she would justify it and she would go with the people and say that they should be together and it shouldn't be a segregation. And the making, the way I made this, it takes a lot of time for me because I usually really like to write stories like on my own and like from time to time. And the making of it, it's more imagination than just a plotline that I need to do and the theme and that's it. First, I would probably like listen music or I would like want to draw something so I can like build characterization and like I try and find out like the setting of where it is. Because usually, for me, the setting is a big plot, like a big part of my story. If it's back then, I would make them humble or modest, or I'd make them want to achieve something great because they wouldn't have like that, that much social status. But if it's modern, I'd make it like more hip or something. And I made mine as though it was like more modern setting, but more within the future. Because this was like in two thousand and like thirty or something. And within this, I would build up my characters and I would build up their, like the way they speak, the way they act, like if they have pride, if they don't. And my character, she has a lot of pride and, but she's insecure at times, which I made that feel as though she was like more alive. Like she would be like a regular girl. She would be insecure about her things. She'd be like afraid like if people are going to judge her for their, her having ESP or not. And this is like the way I built it. And so, the theme of my story, like for Culture Night, since we're going the theme about identity and like culture and how it surrounds you and like the beauty of it, I wanted to make sure that she did identify herself with something. So, I made it that it was ESP. And this is a big part of her. It's a big part of everybody within the story. Because those who have like ESP and those who don't, ESP plays a part in them because it like shows the hate and it shows the pain, it shows the humanity within all of them. And I thought this was a good idea because I didn't want to segregate anybody who was that. Like I didn't want to remind those who were discriminated against because of their race, because of their beliefs, their religion. And that's a big part of society nowadays, like with the upcoming election, it's hurt like many people. And I decided that I wanted to show something that was more inhumane, because it's one of my favorite things, like fiction and fantasy. I've always added things in that. I'm not a nonfiction person. And so, I made it that they identified themselves with ESP and all these things. And because of this, they more often decided, Phoebe, later in the story, she met this man within a bookshop. And within this bookshop, he gave her this book that his grandfather wrote. And the book was told about the past and like the history of black and whites and the segregation. And I have like a part in the story which I really love that I wrote, but I won't share it right now because too much time. But it told her about how the segregation, it was like her father was doing a bad thing. Her father was showing so much inhumanity within the people without ESP that it hurt her and showed her that, she has so much power, that her father was a man who created the war. She surely can group up some people who'd be able to help her and reach out their voice and tell her, and she wants to bring her father down and show him that they're all just like the rest, ability or no ability, they're still human. That's part of the story. It says, we are all human within the end. And I find that to be a big role within this because nowadays, people are always segregated and always discriminated because of their race, their color, their religion. And because of that, people just always forget that we're all human within ourselves and this is a big thing because we're all the same, we just believe differently. And that's bad because if we all believed differently, since we do, everybody would think badly about each other, which is a bad thing. And yeah, that's like my story. And, and I would, how do I say this? Culture Night is something that I took pride in. I really took pride in it because I thought of it as something, since I'm Muslim, I felt like, I felt worried because of Donald Trump being elected and him always going against like all these like, the immigrants, all these things. I was like worried for my family, like what if I have family coming and they'd like not be able to come because they're Muslim and all these things? So, I felt that because of this, my culture was always revolved around it. And my culture played a big role of my identity, like I'm Muslim, I identify myself like that. And it's like one of the first things people ask you, like, um, okay, so what's your name? Like, what do you believe in? And they, I say like Muslims, it either has like, oh, okay, or it's like, oh, you're Muslim and they like ask you questions. And that's how I identify myself as. And I felt like Culture Night was a way I could bring out the reason into it. And I would bring out that just because I'm Muslim doesn't mean you can decide to call me something bad. I don't want to say what it is, but I don't want people to also think about it. Because it just hurts me to think that people would think that way. So, I was so overwhelmed and happy when I saw the people coming in Culture Night and gathering together and it was about the food, especially the food. And it was about, and it was just about everybody coming together and having a good time. Like, it was about the culture and everybody sharing it together. And it was about, and it was just about everybody coming together and having a good time, like it was about the culture and everybody sharing it together. And it was a beautiful time and I wish it was like that all the time, people just saw through it like that. But it's not apparently the unfair reality of life. And so my story just goes along with that and yeah, that's in between.
Thank you all very much, those were wonderful presentations.
Mrs. Rizzo?
I just, I, we're always proud of the students and the educators. Um, but your families must be so proud to watch you present, um, to live TV, um, the work that you did for Culture Night. So I'm sure they're proud of you every day, but it's just that little extra added that you love being a mom or a dad or a brother or a sister. So congratulations to your families because they've raised amazing, amazing students. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Uriel. I just wanna thank you all for sharing your stories with us. Um, your story of how your family came here and what they overcame and what they've accomplished was beautiful. Your story of, you know, using your imagination where in your story, black and white, Hispanic Muslim were all the same. It was just somebody with the, you know, ESP that was different. I love how you just like used your imagination with that story and made, you know, all the races are, are equal and we are. And where's the boy with the recipe? I want you to share that with all of us 'cause it sounds really delicious, thank you so much. We, we wanna, um, we want the recipe emailed to us, please. But thank you, thank you all for coming and sharing that.
Okay, we're gonna go back to calendar item three A on the superintendent's report. And that's the presentation of our MASSS awards. Um, these are awards that we are, uh, that we award one to a female student, one to a male student, seniors in high school each year. They're always kids who are outstanding people in their own right, outstanding students, great citizens of the school, um, good people with lots of promise. And, um, this award is given on behalf of the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents. There are only two awards given out in each district every year, so it's a very coveted award. And, uh, the MASSS asks us to distribute these awards at this time of year so that students can include them on their college applications. Colleges recognize what a rare award this is and the extraordinary kind of person, uh, that these awards are given to. So I am very proud tonight on behalf of the Revere Public Schools and the Massachusetts Association of School Committees to present our two awards to Michael De La Russo and Samantha Rosa.
So I plan on, um, I don't know what college I'm going to yet, I didn't apply early, so I won't really know until the spring. It's a little nerve wracking, but, um, my dream school is Cornell, so who knows? Um, but I hope to go into the sciences, primarily zoology. And I'm probably gonna focus in on ornithology and maybe work in the government for something like, um, the Department of Fisheries and Wildlife or maybe at the Audubon Society or something like that. That's really where I wanna be and wanna be headed towards in my future.
Um, so next year, yeah, I don't know what college I'm going to, um, I did ED to, early decision to Cornell, so hopefully I get in there. Um, but I'm planning on majoring in English and minoring in Communication, just because I really love books. So yeah, that's about it.
Uh, we'll have a two-minute recess. Back, uh, next item on the agenda is, uh, back to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, item three C on the superintendent's report is a report about civil rights and special education. We've talked a little bit about this earlier this year when Mr. Mogavero came and talked about, um, his ELL report. But we did have a comprehensive program review this year. And, uh, Dr. Vedala is now gonna share some more information on the, sorry, coordinated program review. Uh, specifically around the civil rights portion and the special education portion. Dr. Vedala?
Thank you, Dr. Kelly. So tonight I'm gonna talk about the coordinated program review that we had. And a coordinated program review is a review of the school district's compliance, uh, within the Department of Education's regulations within three key areas. So the first area is civil rights, the second area is special education, and the third area is English learner education. And every six years, the department conducts a coordinated program review. So the first area that we're gonna look at tonight is civil rights. In two thousand and ten, uh, we had our coordinated program review and you can see from the graphic on the, on the screen that in the twenty-seven criteria that they looked at, we were fully compliant in seventeen areas and partially, we had partially implemented ten areas. So fast forward to the most recent, two thousand and sixteen review, we were fully compliant in twenty-three areas and we were partially, had partially implemented four of the criteria. So we took a look at those four criteria and we had to do corrective action. And what we found when we looked at it a little closer was that three of the four areas were just that we needed additional policy language around the new regulations. So in area three, our educational programs, we need to provide equal access to all educational programs. And our policy just needed to add the term homeless, uh, in order to be compliant. So in two thousand and eleven, this, the federal government created some new regulations around, um, who are the protected categories and we needed to make sure that we updated all of our policies. So in the area of job postings, making sure that we do not discriminate, um, against any race, religion, uh, we had to add the word sex into our, our policies as something that we do not discriminate against. And finally, as we review our curriculum, we needed to make sure that we added the term gender identity as an area which we do not discriminate against. So we added those in those three areas and then we had one procedural issue in the area of civil rights as well. And we just needed to update, uh, the notice that we send to students, uh, who leave high school without receiving a diploma. So we updated those procedures and as of June two thousand and sixteen, all of our corrective actions were approved and we're fully compliant in the area of civil rights. In the area of special education, they examine sixty-six criteria for compliance within special education. In two thousand and ten, we were fully implemented fifty-seven of those criteria and partially implemented nine. Uh, in our most recent review in two thousand and sixteen, we were fully compliant with sixty-one and we had partially implemented five areas. So the way that they do the special education criteria is they randomly pull fifteen student records to make sure that you're a hundred percent compliant in all areas. So there were five areas that we needed to review for corrective action. Two of the areas included new regulations, so there are specific statements in IEPs for students with sensory needs and a checklist. As they pulled the fifteen, uh, as they pulled the fifteen student records, they found that, uh, as this new regulation was implemented, some did not have that. So we made sure we reviewed all of those items with our staff, provided additional training. And when we did, uh, our own internal audit, we found that all fifteen records that we pulled have, were now meeting that. In addition to that, uh, each IEP now needs to have a statement on bullying for any student whose disability may make them a potential target of bullying. Uh, and so we made sure that we updated those and that all of our IEPs are now in compliance with that as well. Uh, there were additional, three additional areas where we looked at some compliance issues as well. Uh, in area eight, the team member excusal form, we just may, need to make sure that we excuse anyone who is on the attendance list for IEPs that are not in attendance and that includes both parents. So we made sure that that is something that we had fixed and our internal audit showed that we were a hundred percent compliant with that as well. We also needed to look at our timelines for, uh, students regarding the notification of placement and placement changes as well as justification statements for removal from the general ed setting. So if students need to be pulled out of class to get a little bit of extra support and reading, we just need to make sure that we always write a justification statement anytime a child is pulled out. We were able to review that with our staff and we did our internal audit. All fifteen IEPs were in compliance with the state. We submitted that on June twenty-first, uh, I'm sorry, on October twenty-first. And as of October twenty-first, all areas of correction action were approved by the state. So our next step in terms of special education is in three years, we'll have a mid-cycle review. Uh, I, I must thank all of our staff members who had this. As I entered the new position, uh, on July first, I can't take too much credit for this. I have to give a lot of credit to Chris Malone in the area of civil rights, Joanna Rizzo and Wesley Pierce in the area of special education and all the teachers and school staff who really participated in this. They did an excellent job and, uh, we're very proud that they were able to be fully compliant and we look forward, uh, to our mid-cycle review in three years.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vedala, uh, sorry, Dr. Vedala. And, um, as you said, we really do owe, uh, a lot of credit to our faculty and staff who have done their due diligence to make sure our students have what they need in every way, shape and form, both in their civil rights and in their special education rights. Uh, thank you very much. Uh, and of course, I also wanna thank the committee for their support in providing the resources that enable our, our faculty and our staff to, um, do that work, which is so very, very necessary. Uh, for the last item on the, um, superintendent's report, I'm gonna pass the microphone to our student member Gianni Hill uh, for an update on, um, student activities and his perspective on what's going on with the school district.
Thank you, Dr. Kelly. So I just wanna start off with an update on the YPAR, which I told you was the Youth Participatory Action Research Plan. Uh, so this survey has been approved by the School Redesign and Innovation Team this past Thursday, actually, and will be sent out to advisory starting this Thursday for the next month. Again, this data will be used to develop action steps to improve the climate and student participation within the high school. And other than that, most of what I have is reminders for upcoming events. Uh, the class of two thousand and seventeen will be hosting a Zumba Fitness fundraiser this Thursday, November seventeenth at seven PM at the Cal Zone on Beach Street. Uh, this Saturday, November nineteenth at twelve-thirty, will be the annual girls' Powder Puff game against Winthrop. Uh, Strike Out Cancer Bowl-a-thon, this is a class of two thousand and seventeen fundraiser and community service event which will be at Town Line Lanes on this Sunday, November twentieth at nine AM. So anyone is welcome to join and sign up a team. And we also have our annual dodgeball tournament, so teams can sign up by, up, up until this Friday. And it will be Tuesday, November twenty-second at six PM, all are welcome to attend and spectate. Uh, and other than that, we also have, myself along with another student Samantha Carl have been, uh, working with, some members of the School Redesign Innovation Team to work on presenting the student logic model to, uh, faculty members throughout the high school. So I know I updated all of you at the last meeting about that. And so we met with, uh, Chris Kingsley, uh, last week to work on what our plan is for presentation. So within the next few months, we'll be rolling out those presentations to faculty members throughout the high school and then hopefully to other schools too, 'cause we plan to bring the student logic model to the middle schools as well and then eventually elementary schools. Uh, so there's a lot going on over the next couple of weeks and we look forward to reaching out to the community to show them what Revere High is all about, so thank you.
Nice job, Gianni, thank you. Uh, and that concludes the superintendent's report.
Next item on the agenda is subcommittee reports. I don't believe we have any. Next item is School Department Communications, disposing old or broken technology equipment. Mr. McGuire?
Dear School Committee members, we'd like to formally request permission to discard old or broken technology equipment. The hardware we are requesting disposed of is in excess of eight years old. The items are either no longer functioning, broken to the point where the cost of repair exceeds the cost of the device, are so old that they no longer support current curriculum or the newer operating systems. All systems will be stripped of any usable parts and will be recycled in a manner considered to be eco-friendly. So move.
All in favor, all opposed?
Aye.
So ordered. There is no new business?
Nope.
Any late communications?
Nope.
No. Motions?
Nope.
No motions? Public comments? I don't think there are anymore. Uh, no bills to pay with that?
Payment of bills.
Payment of bills.
Yeah.
Do we have bills?
Regular bills, no health bills.
Okay, alright, but. Alright, so the payment of bills?
Yes.
All in favor, all opposed? So ordered. Uh, with that, the Revere, uh, the Revere School Committee will adjourn until December twentieth. Motion to adjourn?
Happy Thanksgiving.
And everyone have a happy Thanksgiving. Thank you. And go Revere High. No, no, uh, no pressure, Gianni, but we're, we're, we'll all be watching you on, on Thanksgiving morning, so. Thank you, and Powder Puff team, of course. Good evening, thank you.